It is September twenty-five, and the time is six o'clock. Thank you for all those who are in attendance. We have quite a crowd here today, and we're happy that you joined us. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Jason Westmoreland, and Councilman Young will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Westmoreland?
Let's pray together. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we pray your blessings be bestowed upon this meeting. Father God, we pray that you just fill this place with your wisdom. That way, every matter discussed would ultimately bring you honor and glory, but also be beneficial to the city of Pascagoula. Father God, thank you for our city council, our mayor, all of our officials, Father God. Pray that you watch over them as they do what they need to do to better this city, Father God. And I just pray, once again, you just bless this meeting, but also bless the city of Pascagoula. We pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Joining in the pledge of allegiance-
A pledge of allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Counsel, before you is tonight's agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next, we have the public comment section. Do you want to use the-
Oh, I don't think you have to.
Okay, we're going to figure this out in a minute. Okay, perfect. All right, so we're pleased, sorry, the mayor had a last-minute change of family situation, so anyway, this is the first time I'm doing this, so bear with me. I hope you all appreciate that. We're pleased to provide this opportunity at each meeting to let citizens provide comments. You'll have three minutes to speak, and this section, obviously, is not a question-and-answer, but we definitely would like to hear your thoughts to a variety of different topics. So at this time, I'd like to ask Travis Bragg to come forward.
So Mr. Bragg could not be present this evening, but I do have written authorization to turn in a letter and speak as in opposition on his behalf. I've already given the letter to your clerk.
Okay, thank you.
And since I know I'm next, I'll just stand still.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Lisa. Go ahead.
So, my name is Lisa Cannon. I reside in Forts Lake, which is just north of the proposed annexation area. During the August nineteenth meeting, the mayor, as most of you who were here, attempted to bully me and silence my voice. Well, I'm not easily bullied or silenced, and I do have a vested interest in the annexation. My vested interest comes in several forms. With respect, I am deeply concerned and will provide proof of my interest. So my concern is beyond property and personal taxes. It also includes law enforcement protection, as well as the potential of a Phase Two annexation of the Forts Lake community, and that is where I reside. You have twenty-five point two miles inside your bull's eye. The ten miles above that area, I feel, is in your crosshairs. And I cite that because historically, Pascagoula attempted this annexation of Phase One, I think is what they called it, or Area One. And there is a publication that was documented on October twenty-first, 2010, which is attached to the letter that I turned in to Ms. Kennedy, that shows the next phase, or next area, Area Two, Forts Lake. So you can't sit here, or Mr. Mayor can't sit here and tell me that Forts Lake and North Franklin Creek are not part of his overall plan. Law enforcement, let's talk that little piece. So Jackson County has assigned deputies to the southeast portion of Jackson County. We have sufficient law enforcement as it is now. They patrol, they check the businesses, they respond to calls as necessary. I am concerned about our area not having sufficient law enforcement coverage if the plan is successful. How would you feel if the Pascagoula Police Department had to commute to you for a call about twenty minutes or so? I wager you would not be very happy. So do you think, logistically speaking, it makes sense to devote a team of deputies to a ten-mile area where they are responsible for one thousand and forty-three square miles of Jackson County? Let's be real. Yes, I believe our area would suffer greatly if this annexation goes through, under your plan. You would be taking away vital services to our little ten-mile community. In the scenario, the closest substations that the county would be in Hurley or in East Jackson County Barn. Now, for them to traverse from Hurley, most likely, they would have to go through Alabama and also a number of other roads as they came from the Hurley area to respond. If they were coming from the East Barn, it would still be about a twenty-minute ride. As a matter of fact, I calculated it today. From here to the County Barn is eighteen minutes for you. So how would you feel if your law enforcement, if that's where they were coming from? I wager you would not be happy.
Thank you.
In summary, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next, we have Greg Fleming.
My name is Greg Fleming, one oh five oh one Pecan Road. I used to live in Pasco, Mississippi, on Knight Street. Twenty-one-year-old, I was excited to get my little bitty house, and then my family started growing. So my house was too small, so I had to add on to my house in Pascagoula. Guess what? I had to get neighbors that don't live on my property approval. People outside the area, I had to get their approval. So my dad taught me to be a man of respect. And I liked Dr. Willis, but I was highly disappointed in Mayor Willis last week when he continually interrupted this lady trying to say they're not affected. Let me tell you something, I fly ultralight airplanes. I got to be five hundred feet above the ground. Unless it happens to be a city in a populated area, now I have to go to a thousand foot. So everybody is affected by this decision you're making. Second thing I want to say is, you know, back a long time ago, there was this man that was accused of something, and it wasn't true. It wasn't right. There's this other man that was accused of something, and he was in jail and imprisoned for it. But these people called the scribes and Pharisees got together, and they got a counsel to try to incite the people to make their image look better about something they were fixing to do that was wrong. I might be hitting a bull's eye here. Every Pascagoula resident is spending fifteen thousand dollars right now to make this annexation look better in the eyes of the public. Let your yeses be yes and your noes no. I wouldn't come in Felix's barber shop and say, "I'm taking over, and you're fixing to pay higher taxes," and that's it. I would have a plan of telling them what benefits I'm fixing to give you, Felix. But guess what? You don't have that. So you're spending fifteen thousand a month. Think about that. So every citizen in Pasco that pays taxes, their tax money, and then waste it right now because you're having to try to make an image. Let your yeses be yes. If it's a good thing, then you ought to just say it's a good thing. Shouldn't have to go hire a bull's eye firm. Come on now. Just tell us what you're really going to do. And if it ain't for us, that's why you see these people here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Stephanie Brown.
I live at eight five five zero North Taylor Road. I am definitely in this area that is affected. I've presented a letter to Ms. Kennedy expressing my concerns. So many people in the proposed annexation area are very poor, or else they're like me and my husband, and elderly. I'm seventy-five years old, my husband is eighty years old. We've been married for fifty-seven years and have lived in Jackson County, and we have paid taxes all this time. If this annexation goes through, if you annex the land brought out from under us, I know my taxes are going to go up because I'm paying taxes to Moss Point and I'm paying taxes to Jackson County. And I'm sure Pascagoula would decide that I need to be paying taxes to them, too. If you go for three years that you can't pay your taxes, your land can be sold. Land that you have owned all of your life can be sold right out from under you. This is an unfair burden to, well, it's unfair whether y'all annex us or not, that you can have your land purchased sold from not paying taxes for three years, it really is. But if y'all do annex us, that puts an unfair burden on the citizens that you are trying to annex respectfully. Please don't do that. One other thing about this bull's eye thing, I wish, I seriously wish, that y'all would talk to the city of Moss Point and to Jackson County and to try to do things that help all of us, not just Pascagoula, not Moss Point, and not Jackson County. We have a beautiful area out here, beautiful, and it should serve us all. But I am very much opposed to the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Parnas Cook.
Mr. Cook is sitting right here, and he just asked me to stand up and speak for him. He is also in opposition and has turned in a letter.
Okay, thank you. All right, and last but not least, David Gregory.
David Gregory, I live at one-two-one-one-three Greens Ferry Road. Nope, that's not in the annexation, but I got three houses and thirty acres of land in an annexation part. But if I lived on the George County line, it would affect me because it's county dollars that y'all going to take if y'all annex, which is eighteen million dollars. So anybody in the county could come down here as far as, you know, me, but I'm just one person. All right, last time I was here, I established the population of Pascagoula used to be thirty thousand, now it's twenty-one, it's declining at so many percent, it's been two weeks, I done forgot, but it is declining. The I-ten frontage is right where it was when I got cut off, I run out of time. Y'all need I-ten frontage, and I realize that, you know, if, what is it, a pig gets fat and a hog gets butchered. If y'all had just took from Highway Ninety to State Line to Independence Road back to the Alligator Farm, some of them might have complained, but I wouldn't because I ain't out that way, so I wouldn't complain. It's not y'all I'm worried about, and I ain't going to sit here and talk about the past city councils or the past board of supervisors, all the bad mistakes and decisions they made, because if I look back at this old boy, I've made a bunch of them. If you get out of bed, you make a bad decision, but you got to keep on going. So, you know, that's the way I look at that. So we ain't going to dog none of them out, or y'all out, or me. But I'm looking at the future. I'm looking at what's leaving Pascagoula and what's moving in. In twenty years, there's going to be a whole bunch of different people up here, and it's going to be different. I got a nine-year-old boy, he's going to be twenty-nine in twenty years. I'm up here for him today. Last week, I was up here for them thirty-four cows I got, but I'm up here for him because he's going to inherit all that. And, you know, I don't want the council twenty years from now making the decisions for my boy and the empire that it took me sixty years to make. And so, but there's a good side to all of y'all that's against it. If they do it, you can be sitting there, because they got to add a councilman, or you got to run against the one on this side. About three hundred votes is how they get elected. The mayor got elected with eleven hundred and forty-five votes. That's real scary. That's five percent of the population elected the mayor, and about two percent elected each one of these people. So, you know, I mean, look, it'd be scary. I'm the mayor, you know what I mean? That'd be real scary. But I can tell you what, I know how to save money, I know how to spend money, and I know how to make money. And I got a proven fact on that. But anyways, I learn fast, too, and I got four years to learn it. So let's hurry up and get this decision, and I'll know if I got to go back to school or whatever. But that's about all I got to say. I didn't write down one page, and I wrote that back there. Thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. We appreciate all of y'all coming out this evening. We will take your comments into advisement, and thank you for coming and joining us and giving us your thoughts. All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing regarding the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget, and I will hand that over to Justin.
Madam Chair, I'm going to excuse myself.
Yes, please do.
Huh? Just waiting there right there.
Ready?
Yeah, I was just waiting there right there. All right, so it looks like it cut off some of this, but I'll go over everything that's on here. So tonight's the public hearing for the FY twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. We have gone over most of this now, so the next step in the process is the hearing and then adoption next week. So on the first slide here, it just, this is the emphasis of the budget, to provide high-quality municipal services that our residents expect, providing safe and secure neighborhoods, concentration on repair and upgrade of the city's infrastructure, and establishing a prosperous, fiscally sustainable, and economically viable city. Main highlights of the budget include the overall city budget is balanced, we have a proposed four percent COLA increase for all personnel, our city millage rate is to remain the same at fifty-four point five mills. This budget incorporates department head requests of about a million dollars in capital outlay projects to replace antiquated city equipment, and three point one million dollars of encumbered capital projects with contracts already in place. We have a two percent increase proposed for Utility Partners Public Works contract, which is within CPI. We will be adding four new personnel, four dispatchers to man the substation, police department substation. We're going to also add an economic development director. We are making a modification to the fire lieutenant, fire captain grades to evenly-balanced promotions. We've talked about this before, to give more of a balance in between promotions. It will only cost the city about nineteen thousand dollars to do that. So that's the highlights here. On that, we have our total city budget. Those numbers are very small, so you probably won't be able to read those, but that breaks down everything as far as the departments go, the sources of revenue, and the sources of our expenditures. To put it into graph form, of course, our main revenue is taxes. Fifty-four percent of our revenue comes from taxes, and our main general fund expenditures are public safety with fifty-one percent, followed by admin and parks and rec. Public safety would be fire and police. Some of the projects that we have requested here, we have eight new police department vehicles, as well as bulletproof vests. We have parks and rec upgrades to the sports complex. We'll be replacing the gym floor at the recreation center, as well as other miscellaneous items. And we have some upgrades in new equipments, equipment for public works as well. Our general fund budget, you can see from this graph here, over the past six years, we've had a steady increase of about five percent per year, which of spending, which is in line with about five percent revenue growth. So that's how we have aligned our spending there. Our overall tax levy for the city, like I said before, will remain the same. The tax levy for the school district dropped a little this year. We have approximately forty million dollars of projects ongoing and planned going, and one of the most interesting things about this slide to me, it shows all the funding sources for the projects that we have here, and you'll notice that the smallest portion of those projects is paid for by taxpayer dollars. The rest of it comes from county grant funds, bond funds, utility funds, but the actual taxpayer dollars was about three point three of that forty million dollars. And just to remind everyone, on our website, you can go to our website, at the bottom of the, there's a page that's for these projects, and it shows a map. It shows every project we have going on for the city and what phase that we're in, so you can see which ones are in planning, which ones are in progress, and see where we are on those projects. So anytime you want to see the projects, they are on our website.
Does that list the projects that are by others that are happening in the-
Not yet.
City?
Not yet. We've talked about the county projects, adding those to it as well. It doesn't have that yet, just our city projects are on there. Some of the projects that are listed here, city hall renovation, a lot of drainage prob- a lot of drainage projects, the substation, most of this is water sewer drainage projects that we have going on that you will see. Some of our other funds, the special tax fund will continue funding Pasco Main Street for one hundred and twenty-five thousand, as well as the Sportsplex light lease of two hundred and sixty thousand. We'll transfer eight hundred and four thousand to debt service for the rec bond payments. Our modern-use infrastructure funds will transfer approximately nine hundred thousand for twenty-twenty-two bond payments. Our library contributions will raise from two hundred and seventy-five thousand to three hundred thousand, which is a mill, and we will transfer a million dollars from the general fund to our capital projects fund during this fiscal year. Charlene's also closing the hurricane fund, transferred those to the general fund balance as well. Like I mentioned, the city personnel, we're adding five full-time positions. We always try to supplement existing personnel with temporary help when we can, and we will seek to fill all vacant positions. This is a new slide that we haven't presented to you guys yet, but it was something I thought that should be covered here. If you can read at the top, this gives our status of our city fund balances, but the top one under government funds is general fund balance. That balance is four point six million dollars. So it was misrepresented, it was just kind of not quite understood what Charlene was saying, or comptroller was saying, when she talked about a healthy city. That's what this is. In accounting audit terms, a healthy city is a city that has a general fund balance of seven point five million. When she said, "We don't have a healthy city yet," that's what she was referring to. We have, we're doing just fine right now. Our cash balance is fifty-six million dollars in the bank. Our general fund is at four point six million dollars. To get to that seven point five gives us lower bond interest rates, so we can bring our bond payments down if we can get that to that seven point five. So that's all she meant by the healthy city remark that she made. It's an accounting term that just gets us where, that's where we want to be so we can bring our bond payments down, which is going to save us money.
And didn't she say she thought we would be there either by the end of this coming fiscal year?
Yeah.
Or definitely the next fiscal year, we would be at that seven and a half million?
Yeah.
So we are definitely on track to be, and I also recall her saying that, like, our utility funds and other funds are very well-funded, and they are up to standards-
Absolutely.
-for what we need in fund balances.
Yes. And kind of, just to mention that here, this last slide is our, a graph that shows where we've come from. So you can see, we took a little dip here down, as everyone knows, to a negative reserve fund balance of fourteen million dollars in twenty-seventeen, and ever since then, we have been pulling our way out of that to where we are now sitting at four point six five four in the positive. So we've done that in a very short amount of time, and so there's something to be said for the work that the city's done to bring us out of that deficit. It took a lot of work and a lot of sacrifices to do so, but this was the right thing to do for the city of Pascagoula, so we're happy to see this slide here, and I'm glad that that was included.
Will the public have access to this?
Sure.
Is it something you're going to put on the website?
The slides here, yeah.
Or is it a document they can pick up, or?
Either. We can do both. Yeah.
I was thinking it'd be helpful.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Justin.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, is there anyone present who would like to address the council regarding the upcoming budget and tax levy? All right, hearing none. I do want to make sure we're transparent. So the council's met several times with Justin and Charlene about the budget. We've been working this for quite a while, so please know, this is not the first time we're looking at this. A lot of time and energy. We appreciate the staff. Some of them are in the audience who have helped work the budget, and yes, we're in a good place. We're hoped to be at an even better place in the year to come, so appreciate all the effort there. All right.
Just to add to that, Amy, real quick, we do start these meetings, and as y'all know, but just to tell everyone else, we start the meetings with department heads in June, and we meet with every department head in the city to talk about their finances. And if you think we take it seriously, these department heads do, too. They don't, they often leave money on the table. They take this very seriously to make sure that they're not spending more than what we've got, and so that's where it starts, is with the department head. So thanks to all of y'all for your work on that.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, any comments or questions from the council? I don't think so. I'm glad that you clarified the healthy city.
Yeah, me, too.
Because I think that that's reassuring for the public to hear, that we are definitely on an upward trend with our cash flows for the city, and that's to be commended. Thank you.
Definitely.
All right. Hearing none, the public hearing for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget and tax levy is hereby concluded.
All right, our next item is item six B. This is a resolution setting the tax levy for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. This basically breaks down the overall fifty-four point five millage rate that we have, and it breaks it into the specific items where each of those mills go. This also includes PGSD.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution setting the tax levy for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty, twenty-twenty-six year? So. Thank you, Darcy.
Second.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Chris. We'll get you next. All right, thank you for that motion. And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
All right.
Justin, back to you.
Next item is item six C. This is a resolution adopting the Avalorum tax assessment rules for twenty-twenty-six. Council is asked to accept and adopt the tax assessment information sent to us from Jackson County. This also includes PGSD.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the Avalorum assessment rules for twenty-twenty-six?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any discussion? We have a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next, we have three public hearings from the Planning and Building Department. Josh?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our first property tonight is eighteen oh seven Prospect. This property was brought to us by a citizen complaining about it. I'm not sure where Prospect is. It backs up at a railroad tracks. There used to be a railroad spur there. This is the front porch of the house. It doesn't look too bad at this point. As you get around the property, it's, uh, it just kind of gets worse. This is what the floors look like inside the house. Kitchen, other parts of the floors, rotten termites have destroyed this thing. Sealants have fallen in areas of it. I'm not sure what's going on with the house, with the family. But the house in this condition is not really salvageable. I mean, it's, the floors to the point where the walls are starting to lean. That's how bad a shape it's in. So the code department's asking for a resolution to remove the structure from the property. Demolition.
All right. Do we have anyone here representing the property to speak? Okay. Is there a motion to declare 1807 Prospect Avenue a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare, and assess penalties of 25% of the cost of cleaning?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Josh, there hasn't been much correspondence with them.
There, we've been in, in contact back and forth with one of the family members, and he was in favor of removing the property.
Okay.
I think there's a battle between family members on this property. It does not need to be repaired. There was somebody living in this thing up until recently. And it got condemned for lack of power. They got, they got pushed out. And that's how we ended up getting in there and seeing how bad it was.
So they haven't responded to the letter of violation that was sent in June?
No.
Nobody has?
Well, the, I think it's a brother or a son to the owner of the house. It's, it was an estate. The son is one of the heirs to it. And he's one of them that's, he said, "There's just not fixed, the house is not repairable." Of course, we went and looked at it, and it's really not. It's in pretty bad shape. It would probably cost three times what it's worth to fix it.
Did I hear you say something about collecting 25% of the cost to tear it down?
Yes. There's a 25% penalty on top of the demolition cost.
Oh, okay. Okay. I heard that backwards. I'm sorry.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I think we have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll get, I'll get it by the end of the meeting. All right. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Josh, the next property.
Our next property is 4317 Nathan Hale. Most of you that's lived here know this. It's a convenience store on the Quarter Long in Nathan Hale. This thing has been a nuisance for quite a while. It'll open for a few months here. It'll close, be closed for a couple of years. It'll open again. I'm not sure when the last time the doors were open on, on this thing. It is getting to be in pretty poor condition. I know the people were breaking into back doors. It's constantly become a dump site. Nobody's cleaning it up. We have sent letters, and sent letters, and sent letters. And apparently, the letters we were sending to begin with were the original owners now telling us they don't own it. We got another contact. We sent the letters to them and still have not got a response. I'm not real sure which direction we need to go with this. This is a concrete building, brick. But the inside is trashed. The outside is trashed. So I'm, you know, I'm really leaning towards this property needing to be removed. It hasn't been a viable store in many years. Felix lives right down the road from it. You know, I got family that lives over there. And this, when it was open back in the day, everybody going to the, to the lake, it was, it was great. People don't do that anymore. The last time it was open, it was probably open just a few months. And it was a hassle for everybody. So at this point, I don't think it needs to open back.
And how long ago was that?
Uh, this, the stuff started out at 18, when we started having issues.
But the last time it was open?
Uh, I want to say in '23.
Somebody opened it for a short period, period of time, about two and a half, two years ago.
Yeah, somewhere around '23. It was a short period of time. The address for the owner is out of Moss Point.
Once they stopped that, that path from Monaco Lake?
Yeah.
Once they cut it off, you could only come from Breach and Woods.
Right.
That really killed it.
It dropped it.
So, yeah, yeah.
So it's, structurally, it's probably a decent building. I think the roof is leaking on it. But the usability of the building, it's about useless.
If we were to demo the build, what kind of liability would we have to the tanks?
I don't think we have any liability to the tanks. We're not taking the tanks. We're going to take the tower. They can cap the tanks off.
That'd be our responsibility.
I mean, it's basically plugging the lines.
So that's not expensive, right, or?
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be expensive anyway it goes. It's a large building, and it's concrete and brick. It's going to be a expensive demo. But capping off what's there with the tanks, and, you know, removing the pumps and that, that'd be like a third party come in to remove that. And, but that's all going to be on the contractor. He'll hire them, bring them in. We pay him, he pays his third party. We're not involved.
How long have you been trying to get hold of the new owners?
We have sent letters on this thing from '18, '19. It somewhat got cleaned up. The previous owners cleaned it up some. And then back in '24, it started all over again, and it's just went downhill from there. And nobody's contacted us and this new owners. I still think it's family, but I don't know.
When did you find, find out the new owners?
When the previous owner called and said, "Well, I don't own that anymore."
Okay.
And then we found where the deed had been transferred to someone else, but we still think it's the same family.
Okay.
So they've known.
And when was that?
That was, um, late last year, early this year.
Okay.
Josh, is that a common practice among some things where they'll present a family member's name to prolong?
Yeah. They'll, they just keep moving it from one family member to the next. And it's, uh, it's really just cash shelters is what it is. They'll draw out so much out of it, put it in nephew's name. He'll milk it for a while. They put it in aunt's name. It just kind of goes in a circle. And that's the way they do it.
So on this sheet that we were given, it shows the last violation letter was sent in November of 2024, but you have not had, do you follow up after that?
Yes. I mean, we follow up until we start prepping this thing. Once we start prepping it, and we don't send anymore, it comes to you guys.
Okay. And I see several pieces of paper that are on, you know, in a couple of different locations attached to the building. Are those like repeated contact?
Yes.
Attempts?
Yes.
Okay.
The notices for cleanups.
On the one image that you have of the front door, you see two different places of the notifications. I guess one is here at City Hall, and then the other is actually on the structure.
Four on the building. So that's notices from cleanups to all the way to now, to where we're looking at possible demolition.
Okay.
It would have been great if the people that own the storage facility right there, I think you've even talked about it, with someone would have purchased it, but.
Yeah. They've got, the storage facility is for sale. They're trying to get out from under it.
Are you serious? I thought they were gonna, uh, there was gonna be, what? I didn't know that.
Kind of squash that. I mean, you know, if somebody wanted to go in and actually do something, the building, the building is repairable. A store is just not going to make it.
Yeah, it won't make it.
It just, it just won't make it. I don't really know what else you could do with it. People are not going back there to shop.
Right.
You know, I mean, and what the district that it's in, and the subdivision around it, there's not a whole lot you can do other than a convenience store. So I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's sad, you know? Our convenience store is kind of going away. It's just, the direction it's taken.
And at this point, because it's been vacant for so long, it's basically an attractive nuisance.
Yes.
Right?
I mean, it's been broke into multiple times through the back door. We would send them letters, trash hanging out the back door, you know, from the previous owner. Well, they kicked the back door in. There was people living in it. They would screw it back shut, whatever. But it's, it's, it's been a constant headache.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Is there anyone on behalf of the business that would like to speak tonight? All right. Seeing none. Is there a motion to declare 4317 Nathan Hale Avenue a menace to public health, safety, and welfare, and assess a penalty of 25% of the cost of cleaning?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Josh, next property on Little John.
Next property, 5117 Little John. This property was brought to council roughly one year ago, August of one year ago, to clean up. Person that passed away. The house was just trashed. Both Felix on this one also. We decided not to demo, demo the house, to leave it. We cleaned the property, removed, cut the grass, removed some of the stuff in the yard. But this is, we're, we're back again. It's still vacant. It's still dilapidated, and we're back to having the yard dumping trash in the backyard, in the side of the house. So it's, it's become a nuisance. You know, we, we gave the family time, the last time to clean it up. They didn't do it. We, we cleaned it, gave them time to maybe sell it, do something with it, but nothing's happened. It's still in the same condition it was, and nothing has changed.
Now, the tax is current on the property?
See, uh.
I'm going to dash that on the other one.
Don't see anything on it. Yes, they are, yes, they are, they are up to date.
Oh, I see that.
Utilities have been off for two years. It's been vacant for two years.
The owner's local? Taxes been paid?
Taxes have been paid.
The owner's local, you may have said that.
Um, the.
The owner's deceased, it says.
Yeah, the owner's deceased. The brother was getting the mail to that address. Is the only address we have that was, his address.
And haven't had any contact with him?
No. We had contact with him the first time.
Right.
And nothing since. I don't think they need, I don't think they can afford to do anything with it.
Okay.
That's tough.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Is there anyone present to speak for against this property? All right. Is there a motion to declare 5117 Little John Street a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare, and assess a penalty of 25% to the cost of cleaning? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions concerning the consent agenda? I'll take the silence as a no. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Thank you. Thank you. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to clear something up, because I had a question about the opioid funds and the $2,000 to the Home of Grace is for a, a one-time expense of $2,000. Is that correct? And we have a little bit of our opioid funds left, and so I think that's a great use of it for addiction recovery. Just wanted to comment on that.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion?
I want to ask some questions about this opioid money. Where does it go? Because they're saying that it can go anywhere and see. Where does this money go to?
Say it again. What was your question?
About this opioid money that we're talking about, where does this money go to?
So we get, we, we're part of a settlement fund, and when we get these funds in, we normally, those go to the fire department. And Hyler designates, there's specific things just to fight the opioid crisis is how you have to spend those. And so Hyler will spend those on things like.
Training, training, Narcan?
Yeah.
Supplies for overdoses, things like that.
And that's all we've ever spent it on. And now we were requested assistance for the Home of Grace to, for the specific thing is to fight the opioid crisis. And so we thought this would be a good way to spend some of that money.
Yeah. I just wanted to find out what was, what was the ways that you put the money out?
Yeah.
Because it says that you can do anything with this money.
Anything to fight the opioid crisis, basically, is what it is. And so anything qualifies for that.
Opioid problems in passing through.
So what, so that, so what he just said, those, those things are some of the ways that he does that, training, Narcan, that's some of the ways that we fight it. But the Home of Grace thing was basically to help people that have addiction to opioids beat that addiction and become, you know, functioning members of the community again. And so we thought that was a good way to help them with that fight.
It actually helps us out better, because if they get touched with them and they get treatment, then we're not re-hit the same person with this stuff and blowing that money. So it's a wonderful place to put that money.
Yeah.
Like that, uh, what was the name of that drug that you call that?
Narcan.
Yeah. Doing some studying on that, and that's pretty lethal stuff.
That's the stuff that brings them back. That's what, that's what saves their life. Yeah.
It's a lot of times.
Fitting off.
Hyler, you can share more, but if, you know, they're.
When they're overdosing, they hit them with Narcan. If you send them.
It brings them back.
Yeah, they bring them back with Narcan, squirt it in those where they, and break out. But it's a temporary drug. They have to go see treatment in the hospital after they have Narcan.
Yeah.
So they're going to go.
Save their lives.
Very successful. Yeah. All right.
And Hyler, I asked this question earlier, but do you know if the county receives some of these funds too, or other municipalities, or is it just a?
I do not know that.
Okay.
It's anybody who's part of that settlement fund. Is that correct?
There is a lot more restriction on what you can do with your money. And I want to say, like, last year, they really released the money, because they noticed that there were some of the restrictions you couldn't actually spend on, or they're asking you to.
Yeah.
Because once they relieved, uh, lightened up the restrictions, we started spending on, like I said, the training, uh, personnel, and more than Narcan, actually, because we were.
Yeah.
And we mentioned too, that, and what, two of the other items that are on the consent agenda deal with accepting opioid, joint opioid settlements. So we'll get more funds in, and so we'll decide how that's spent when those come in.
All right. Thank you. So we still have a motion in a second. All in favor, we'll do this one more time. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right. Next, I think it's back over to Justin with the city manager's agenda.
Yes. So tonight, we have five items under city manager. Our first item, Item 9A, is a discussion for Lakeview Drive Pier. Resolution has been presented to council to approve a license agreement with Bentley and Carly Brady to build a pier on the Inner Harbor in front of their residence on Lakeview Drive. Council has previously been provided renderings for the pier. Tonight, we'll hear from the Brady's and their representative, Michael Fondren. And you'll have the opportunity to ask any questions. We'll also hear from anyone who would like to speak for or against this project. You can also ask them questions as well. So, Mr. Fondren, if you want to come on up?
Thank you very much. I'll be as brief as I can. First of all, we feel like that the Brady's, uh, first, everybody probably knows where this is. It's all right there on, on the harbor. When you're going down Pasca Gula Street, you pass up the harbor, take a right on Lakeview, go down Lakeview a little ways. And, uh, the Brady's have a house that, um, that Carly Brady is the granddaughter of Ms. Jay-Z Torgerson, and she purchased the house from her grandmother's estate, Ms. Torgerson. And across the street from there, the. And across the street from there, the Torgersons have had a pier there for probably since, matter of fact, I remember when I was young, I think I was in junior high in the 70s, and they had a pier there. And they still have a pier there, and they've maintained that pier there, and they want to take down that pier because it's getting old and it's in disrepair, and they'd like to build another pier there. In order to do so, they got, of course, they gotta get a permit from the Department of Marine Resources, and the DMR has requested that we contact the city to make sure that the city is good with them building a pier there. The pier that they wanna build there is frankly, a little larger than the pier that's already there, and they would like to put a boat lift there. They would like to put a single boat lift there. They've agreed that they don't need a roof on top of it. They originally wanted to do that just to protect the boat from the elements and have shade when it's hot. And they originally wanted to do that, but I think some of the neighbors didn't want that, so they said, well, let's, let's don't do that. Let's just try to appease the neighbors, and let's try to make this the best opportunity that we can. Let me give you a little bit of history of it, because we feel like they have a legal right to build there. It's called riparian rights. It's actually littoral rights in this situation, but sometimes the courts and different laws use those in a synonymous nature that riparian takes in littoral rights. Littoral rights deal with lakes or harbors where it's not flowing water, whereas riparian rights deal with flowing water. Like, if you have a stream or river running through your property, that is riparian. In this situation, it's actually a littoral right. And we feel that they have, and we're gonna use the word riparian, because that's what the statute uses, even though actually, the Mississippi Supreme Court has said it should be littoral on the Mississippi coast. Nevertheless, we feel that they have riporian rights, riparian rights there. And the reason being is that if you look at the history of that particular piece of property, it was originally owned by a Mr. Goshay. And that particular Mr. Goshay owned the property all, pretty much all around in that area. Harold W. Goshay, he originally platted the Lakeview subdivision. He filed the plat, and it was made up of several different lots, and the Brady's lot is one of those lots, and there's several other lots that have the same rights. And subsequent to that, he sold all of those lots to a gentleman named Mr. Schultz. Mr. Schultz then, and he also sold all of the riparian rights, and it specifically states in his deed that he's selling all the riparian rights, and all of the rights bordering all of that property around there, all the way to the water. And of course, as you know, the Mississippi statute, the Mississippi law, Mississippi, the state of Mississippi owns everything from the mean high tide mark out. So that belongs to the state of Mississippi under the tidlance trust. We don't, we don't really have jurisdiction of that. The state of Mississippi does. So when he sold that to the state of Mississippi, I mean, when he, when Mr. Goshay sold that to Mr. Schultz, he signed a deed, and in that deed, he gave him the riparian rights. Subsequent to that, in the 40s, Mr. Schultz specifically, and all the people from that area, all the way around the harbor, till you get to where the Souches still own that property from the 40s. And you go, now it's the Souches, the Perkins, and it goes around to where Bruce Grimes lives, and there's several houses all the way to the Brady's house, all the way to Shepherd. And in those deeds, it says that the property is to be used for, quote, "public and boat docking purposes only." And they specifically reserve in their deeds that the person that conveyed that property to the city reserved the right to dock a boat there. Now, I'll agree, that deed does say that they reserved that right for himself to dock a boat there. So then there's the argument, well, is it exclusive? Is it non-exclusive? Did it run with the land? Did it go to prior successors and title? Well, I think our answer lies in the fact that when we look at the way the city has treated that since the 1940s till today, if we look at, if y'all remember, he was a prior councilman, Keith Belcher, when he deeded his property to Matt Perkins and Sarah Perkins, he specifically states that he gives them his riparian rights to dock the boat, and they have the rights across the street, even though I don't believe they have title across that particular street, to dock a boat there, even though they live on the north side of the harbor. So that has been the tradition and the custom, and it specifically states in their deed. And you're welcome to see the deed, but it's recorded at the courthouse, that they have the right, title, and interest to all privileges of docking any boats and use of said property at any time in any harbor of the city of Pascagoula. And that was specifically conveyed to them. And then you have the situation with Bruce Grimes and his wife Linda Grimes, where they had obtained, where the city of Pascagoula, using that same language from another gentleman called N.L. Hatton and his wife Murdy Hatton, when they deeded their property to the city to build the harbor, they used the exact same language about they reserved the right to dock a boat there. And the city interpreted that in this correction deed and allowed that language to be interpreted as their assigned grantees, heirs, devises, and successors, the right to dock free of charge one boat owned by them at any time in front of and adjacent to the lands now owned by the grantors, which is the city of Pascagoula. So, and you can look around, if you look at the tradition and the custom that has been applied to that particular area, not only in the other deeds that have addressed this particular situation, have, when the issue has arose, it's just never arose in this situation. When it has arisen, they've all granted their riparian rights to the landowner from the city. But if you look at all of that area, from the Souchay house, rapid, all the way around the harbor, I believe everybody has exercised their riparian rights from the 1940s. Well, I got a picture in 1952, that if, you know, you can go online now, get all these fancy pictures, but in 1952, you can see, if you go around, that people are docking boats here across from their house, and then you just go forward. This is 1975, and we got a substantial number of boats here in front of the houses here, boats and piers. Same thing here in 1985. Now, I'm old enough to remember this. I was in high school. There were, well, I can remember in junior high, there were boats and people exercising their riparian rights. This is 2012. The neighbor south of the Brady's exercising their riparian rights here. The Brady's having a pier already there that's still existing. The neighbor north of them having a pier here. The Grimes exercising their riparians, the Perkins and the Souches. All of these people in similarly situated situations with the same exact deeds exercising their riparian rights. And then, of course, the history goes on till today, 2022. And if you look at, I got a lot of other pictures, I'm not gonna bore you with them all, I'll just tell you what they say, and you're welcome to look at them, though. But if you look at the history and tradition of the Mississippi Gulf Coast, when you have a road that borders or abuts a position where you got riparian rights in that situation, the law has respected people's riparian rights. I'll give you a case that went to the Mississippi Supreme Court, where the Mississippi Supreme Court said, it's Mississippi State Highway Commission versus Andrew Gillage. It was a 1992 case, and in that particular case, Mr. and Mrs. Gillage, it's kind of an interesting case. It happened, everybody knows where it is. When I tell you where it is, you'll say, I know where that is. It's where I-110 meets Highway 90 in Biloxi, right west of the Beau Gravage. The Gillages owned some property north of Highway 90, and one of the issues was whether there was a taking of some of their rights. But in that, the Supreme Court held that even though the Gillages do not own Highway 90, they do not own the seawall, they do not own the man-made beach, they still have riparian rights to the Mississippi Sound, which is very analogous to this situation, that even though that that's a public right of way in front of the Brady's house, as it is in front of all of those neighbors on the south side, as well as Wade Street on the north side, all of those people have exercised those riparian rights since the 40s, and that's all they're asking to do. And if you look along Beach Boulevard, those people can still build piers, as they have recently, in front of, in front of those man-made beaches, along River Road. Not everybody has title to the property on the west side of River Road, but they're allowed, DMR allows them to build piers on the west side of River Road, but they don't have fee simple title on the west side of River Road. If you go on further, the next stop, first one I could think of, was East Beach and Ocean Springs. Everybody, just about everybody along that has a pier. Well, remember Judge Harris brought that issue up to the Supreme Court? He didn't want them to build that walkway, because he said he owned the beach. Supreme Court said, no, you don't own the beach. You don't own East Beach, you don't own the walkway, you don't own the beach, but you do have riparian rights. And all, and those people can build a pier, even though they don't have fee simple title across the road. And then something I think is rather unique, and DMR obviously knows this, because it's right across the street from their office, if you go down Bayview Avenue in Biloxi, right across the street from those houses, they don't have title to that little strip of land, but they, just about every house has a pier there, right there west of the I-110 Bridge. And because they have riparian rights, it's tradition and custom of the Mississippi Gulf Coast and this community. Also, if you go to Bay St. Louis and look down there, Beach Boulevard on the north side of the bay. So we feel that all they're asking for is the privilege to exercise their rights, and we, we've agreed that if a license is all that y'all will give them, that's fine with them. They feel that even though they actually have the legal right to build there, they're not interested in litigating with the city, they're interested in just building a pier, tearing down the old one, build another one. And we feel like they made some proposed drawings. Personally, I've told them this, I said, I think those proposed drawings are not gonna pass DMR's muster. I think DMR is gonna make you scale them back, because DMR has control of what's being built from the mean high tide mark out, because that's under the Mississippi Public Tidlance Law. And they're gonna control, subject to the city's, I think, reasonable approval. They're gonna decide what affects navigation, what affects exactly where a pier should be located, what affects everybody else's riparian rights, and things of that nature. And I just, we're just asking for a license to do that. And I, answer any questions you got, if you got any.
I have a question. Was their deed, did it transfer the riparian rights or the littoral rights or whichever one? Did their deed transfer that down to them?
Their deed, just like the deed before the Grimes deed, did not mention riparian rights. The deed before the Grimes deed, they had to go back and do, it's called, they had to do a correction deed to do that. And, and the city voted on it, I believe it was in the 90s, but, yeah, they had to go back and vote on it, and...
So is that something we have to do first?
Um, not unless you wanna give them the riparian rights, which we'd love for you to do that, if you wanna do that.
I was just saying, does that need to get cleared up before we can do anything else?
I think we've got numerous examples around town where, like you mentioned, where you have the rights straight across the street.
Yeah, I think to, if they're, would accept a license agreement or do a lease or something like that, sort of resolves that issue without having to actually get a judge to tell you if they do or don't.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they, the deed that preceded, I don't know if it was the one before, or a few predecessors and title, it didn't mention it either, and they had to go back and do a correction deed. But they wanted the riparian rights, and my clients are satisfied with a license.
Okay.
Michael, maybe I missed this when you were saying, the majority of the houses around there have them rights? Is that what you were saying, basically?
They, yes. Now, some of them specifically stated in their deeds, and some of them don't. But the custom and tradition has been that those have exercised them, but some of them specifically state and some don't. Yeah.
Michael Moore, do we have any of these kind of agreements with anybody else that you, where, right now, licensing for waterfront?
Not for a pier. I mean, we, the city's used them in other instances, like in downtown, where, you know, things get tight, down, things like that. I mean, something arguably, I mean, the question about whether they have the riparian rights is somewhat unresolved. I mean, Mr. Fondren made a very good case for why they do, but it's not 100% clear. And so, basically, to the extent that those rights are potentially the city's, you need some agreement of some sort to allow them to, you know, use that area.
Okay. Understood.
And they're willing to keep it roofless, so it doesn't block people's views, and they are willing to, of course, they have to comply with DMR. If DMR says to make it smaller, then they're willing to do whatever, they have to do what DMR says, or they don't get a permit. And they're willing to comply with the city's rules and DMR rules and the Army Corps of Engineers rules, and we feel like a harbor is made for, a boat harbor is made for docking boats.
That's right. Michael, going back to the licensing, I put the numerous deeds on Beach Boulevard that don't mention any kind of riparian or littoral rights. They have to cross the city street to get to that, so would they have to cover one of these licensing agreements if they were to build piers on Beach Boulevard?
I, I mean, my understanding, and this was all before my time, was that when they built the road and then the beach, that it was made clear to the owners at that time that it wasn't affecting riparian rights. I mean, I've looked at deed examples to see how that was set up.
I wonder if this is something we're gonna be doing going forward?
I've assumed they've always had riparian rights in that.
Well, I've got a deed, Mike, that have that on there, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure. The, there's another version of a resolution that was passed out tonight that would approach it a little differently than what was on the agenda, which would be to consider preliminary approval first, let them get going with DMR, and then once they get to that process, to come back for a final approval.
Yeah, because I think, as some of the other comments that we've received... Yeah, because I think, as some of the other comments that we've received, some individuals have emailed us and whatnot, that I do, I mean, like you said, that it has to be, remain navigable. It has to be able to, because of what happens when the neighbor wants to build one, they've got to be able to get to their boat. And my concern was about, how do we dredge? Once you have a structure there, and how do you, if we decide to go in there and replace that bulkhead, how do we do that? And some of those kinds of things, so.
DMR has to, they're going to be, I've, if y'all have ever applied, I've applied one time for a DMR permit, and it is a rigorous exercise, and they will be very strict on what's navigable. And I really feel like they're going to make their preliminary drawing smaller. And because it has to be navigable, it has to be, you can only go out a certain percentage. And, but yeah, they have, DMR is going to protect their tylenols. And they're going to protect the navigable portion. And they're going to protect everybody else's riparian rights. But to answer your question, there's a few deeds on Beach Boulevard that have riparian rights, but there's a lot that don't. There's a few. I can name a few. But there's, but I started putting them in all of them, because I think the Gillage case says you have them. You know, because that's a public right-of-way, a seawall, and a man-made beach. So I think you retain your riparian rights.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to share their thoughts with us tonight? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ronnie Sheldon. I live next door to the south of the Bentleys there. I was born and raised in Passagulla. And come next October the 12th, I've lived at 1003 Shepherd Avenue for 31 years. And I'm going to get a little bit off my script here to address some of the issues that Mr. Fonder brought up. The part about the, as a courtesy to the neighbors objecting to the roof is not correct. That mandate was put out by the city of Passagulla. At the time that mandate was given to Mr. Bentley, none of the neighbors had any knowledge of this whatsoever. None. In reference to the riparian rights that the neighbor to the south, myself, exercised, I have not been exercising riparian rights. For years and years, and I couldn't see the photographs, even when I was a little kid, riding my bicycle down to Mr. Schultes' property to fish off their pier, there was dozens of rowing skiffs along that piece of property across from my house, and across from the piece of property of Miss Jaycee's. Miss Jaycee used to have boats over across there for the grandchildren to play in. That was not riparian rights. That was a courtesy to the people that owned sailboats out on the mooring. And when we moved there in 1994, there were still a half a dozen rowboats there. I built my sons, my two bucks' sons, a boat for them to row around with and play in the harbor. I eventually owned a sailboat. And I had a rowboat, and eventually the skiff that has been sitting across the street now for 22 years to get access to that sailboat. I no longer have the sailboat. I'd love to have another one, but right now, that's not in the woodwork of it at all. In reference to Mr. Belcher having riparian rights, I used to go to church with Mr. Belcher. And Mr. Belcher and I knew each other well, and we discussed it quite often. Mr. Belcher more than once complained to me about the piece of property he owned. Not that he had riparian rights, that he owned across the street. People, he has a aluminum handrail there. People would lean on the spindles and break them off, and how much it would cost him to get those. So I don't think it was riparian rights that Mr. Belcher had there. As far as transfer of the property from Mr. Schultes to the city, Mr. Schultes and his helper built that existing bulkhead, the one that is there today, that is owned by the city, with the agreement that if he built the bulkhead, he would dedicate that land from the bulkhead to the city with the county's agreement to dredge out the inner harbor. So that's where we're at up to that point there. When we purchased our house in 1994, from the landowner, the homeowner, the original homeowner that built that piece of property made it perfectly clear to me that, no, you do not have riparian rights. That was fine with me. When we closed on the house, the same thing to our closing attorney. No, Ronnie, Pam, you do not have riparian rights. That view of the inner harbor and the character of that inner harbor has not changed since I was a kid going there 60 years ago, and my friends going there on a bicycle. When we purchased that house 31 years ago, I remember the very first time we ever looked at it, Pamela made a remark to the realtor that was representing us about the wonderful view that it even had out of the upstairs west bedroom. And I remember sitting on the other side of the bedroom, and our realtor responded to my wife was, "Well, the current owner feels the view alone will justify the asking price of this house." I'm here to tell you today, it does, in more ways than one. We purchased a house that had a great location and a wonderful view. It just happened to have a house on it that I had to purchase along with that. That pier that the Brady's are proposing, and it has been scaled down. The first pier that y'all approved, or y'all sent him out with on the drawings, was huge. It was huge. It extended out, I mentioned Mr. Brady, he came to my house. I said, "Brady, that's going out into harbor 55 feet." The way it was set up, he had his 30-foot boat lift, he had piers on three sides of it that he could tie up other boats. Along with a, at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, was it a 10 by 40 entertainment area? I'll call it that, the deck.
It was 10 by 20. 20 was the width of the dock, so 10 foot off of the deck.
Okay, all right, I'm not going to. And I remember making a comment, Brady, about that. I said, "You could tie up a 45-foot sport fisherman there." And his response was, and I quote, "I sure could." So we're not potentially just talking about a single boat that's hanging up on the lift. I have some photographs. Who is taking care of the PowerPoint tonight?
I don't know if I have a way to get them on the, that's all around from the back.
Let's see if they're on here. Hey, hey, look, there you are.
There you go, thank you. That view, right there, is the view from my sunroom out of my house. That pier that you see jutting out just a little bit beyond the tree there on the right-hand side, by their measurements, is 13 foot 6 inches long. Their pier, as y'all have given them permission to double to, is 55 foot and no more. Next photograph, please. That is a view from the swing that I've had sitting in that limb for almost 30 years. I've had neighbors and people walk by and make the comment about how nice the view is. If you look at that view, the proposed pier, as it's scaled down today, is in an extent beyond halfway that opening from the Lane's property and back over the heads. It is going to greatly impact my view. You know, they say a view is worth a, you know, is priceless. I can tell you to a lot of artists in our community, that is a priceless view. You go to the Singler Health Plex, that rowing skiff that you see on the, as you go into the workout area there, that mural that's up there, and that sailboat, is a skiff that I built, and the sailboat that I owned at the time. If you go to Dr. Whitlock's and look outside of his office, the picture that he's got, excuse me, once again, is a great view of the harbor with one of my skiffs. If you go to Keesler Credit Union, just beyond Ed's drive-in, a huge photograph taken from this angle here. So not only will we lose our view, we're going to lose a view that is sought after by a lot of artists there as well. I could really use something to drink. Anyone got?
There's a water fountain, but it's around the corner out.
All right, well, I'll try to get by with that. All right. Now.
$1.50.
Next on the agenda. On my agenda, excuse me. All right. I'm going to read you almost verbatim. I'm going to shorten it up just a little bit. The City Ordinance, number 122021. Whereas, the city of Passagulla establishes design standards as needed to promote the city's policy of preserving and protecting the character of a residential and non-residential area. Whereas, the construction of accessory structures inconsistent with the character of the aforementioned areas should be addressed, conform to the city's policy. I'll give you the copy of it. Has the city, in the proposal from Mr. Bentley, had you considered your own ordinance? That's a question to y'all, the council.
Or do you want them to answer?
Excuse me?
You were asking for them to answer that question?
Yeah, was that considered?
So, just to be clear, and Michael, feel free to jump in, but we have been provided information by Bentley and his wife. We have, you know, asked everyone to come tonight so that we could understand kind of all aspects. But we have not provided any directive to Bentley. I know you mentioned a couple of times in your.
Then I would like to ask the city, at this point, your further decisions regarding this that you refer to your own policy, please. Next photograph, please. All right. This is the drawing that Mr. Bentley has submitted to the city and to the DMR for a view and review of it. Mr. Bentley's pier, and y'all have given him permission, and there's more about that later, to go out 55 foot. Mr. Bentley's pier, as it's now proposed to be in place, I think is an error. Mr. Bentley is going to have to maintain a 10-foot easement south of Dr. De Terrace's Southern Mills property line. His pier, as it's going to be constructed, will be 20 foot wide. He's got a 12-foot slip, he's got a 4-foot finger pier on each side of it. That 20 foot and the other 10 foot will no longer put that pier when you allow for that 30 foot now. Now, we're talking about 30 foot. Instead of the pier being just north of the old pier that he's going to tear down, it'll be about a foot and a half south of it, which is going to narrow the gap between Dr. Lane's property. We're looking at a pier that's 55 foot long proposed, and we only have 84 foot of distance. So they're closing up 52% of it. I believe Mr. Fonder responded to 25% and acceptable. I think we're a little bit over it. And if you put the pier where it's actually going to have to be placed, to maintain that easement, we're talking about closing up 66% of the available waterway. I don't think that's quite what we were expecting. All right. I've tried to talk to Mr. Bentley several times. I've met with him. I've even went out to his office to try to work with him on this. And Bentley's got his idea of what he wants, and then I've got my idea of what I think I can do to protect my view as much as possible. He hasn't been very receptive to any of my suggestions. The drawing that I submitted to him the last time that I proposed was close to that, but it also only extended out 30 foot, not 55 foot. He still has options available. Plenty of options available. For the last, since he's been there, he has tied up, just like I have, my little skiff, just more between two posts there. He could put a boat, if he wants to put a boat out there, he could put antifallant paint on the bottom of it, and he could leave it in the water even without a dock, just like what I've been doing for years, for 21 years with that. Also, even beyond that, he still has options available. I suggested to Bentley early on, I think it was the second time we spoke out there, that he could build that pier parallel to the dock to the existing bulkhead, which would greatly reduce the impact of what we have to look at. And if you want to use a cantilever, cantilever lift that is very common in canals down in South Florida, residential areas, that boat would actually, about the only person's view of it in effect would be Mr. Bentley's. Because it'd be tucked in real closer to shore. It wouldn't be extended very far out. All right, I'm just about through. Back in late July, before Mr. Bentley ever approached me about the pier, I have been in contact with the Department of Marine Resources. And I had already requested all the records pertaining to this, which I have received those records. They're now in my possession. But I got to be honest, I am very, very bugged, and I would like, please, an explanation for this. But what I have in my hand, from the DMR, is a license agreement for the pier for $1 the city of Passagulla sent to DMR on Brady's behalf.
I'll copy you.
You can have that. I've got them all on my computer. Will someone please explain to me the purpose of that? To me, it almost looks like it's a done deal. I know this is not signed by the mayor yet, but why did?
Nothing's been approved.
Nothing's been approved, but why was that letter sent to the DMR? That's, I received that letter from the DMR. You sent it to the DMR.
I don't know that I did.
I believe that's what it says on the top.
Well, that's just, it says that prepared, it doesn't send it to me.
Okay. The mayor?
I don't know who sent it to him.
A little puzzled by that. All right, one more thing. The owners of the property across the street, the estate of Dr. and Mrs. Lane, had they been contacted?
Yeah, and they've reached out to us.
We've received feedback from them.
Okay. From Robin, the executor of the estate?
From family members. From family members.
All right.
We appreciate all that information that you shared.
Okay, all right, one more thing. Justin, this isn't meant to step on your toes, but you very courteously sent every one of us a letter inviting us to this meeting tonight. And you said, in your closing sentence of the first paragraph, "Please note that if city council approves the proposed pier, the proposal will be subject to further review by the Mississippi Department of Marine Resources." I've been dealing with the Department of Marine Resources now for about three years. Ever since the city of Passagulla and the DMR was trying to reach an agreement on selling the Lighthouse property to the state. Michael, you were involved with that. I've been working with the DMR then. Since then, we, I am really pushing hard for the restoration of Round Island. There is money appropriated to do it, but now they're going through the permitting process. I've had a lot of information. I have a lot of people that I've got to know real well over the last three years. I don't really believe your comments are exactly true, because I was told point-blank, all the paperwork is done. The only thing the DMR is waiting to approve there end of the permit is granting this lease.
That's incorrect. And Mr. Fonder explained that to you earlier, sir. He told you that it gets, we have to do preliminary approval. DMR has to then look at the plans as well and give their approval before we can do anything. So, yeah, that statement is correct.
All the environmental work, all the environmental work has been done. Their main concern is environmental work.
Okay, but DMR does have to approve after.
Oh, yes, they do have to approve.
Yeah.
But the only thing that's holding them up from approving it is that signed letter that Mr. Moore has right there. That's it.
I don't know about that.
Ronnie, I spoke with DMR today. They have concerns about the dimensions of the pier.
I brought those concerns to her.
They're aware of them, they haven't agreed to anything.
Yes. And I'm still addressing that with them. I'm aware of that. I'm not at liberty to talk about it too much, but I'm aware of it. I'm the one that brought them.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate all the information. Is there anyone else here today that would like to share their thoughts?
All right. Now, I know I'm not going to hear the end of this because I don't have pictures to put on the TV. I have handouts, and it's much more old-school for everybody. But bear with me. I'm a visual learner, so I feel like visual aids may be the easiest way to convey new things. Good evening, I'm Matt Jones, and I've come here tonight to find out a little bit more about the proposed lease of the city land along Lakeview Drive, as well as share a few of my own thoughts on the matter. I appreciate you bearing with me on the handouts, and I'll get to them and reference a few of them and kind of explain things as we go, and I apologize for not having this on the screen, as I did not know that was an option, but it will be noted for next time. So I did want to find out, I know in the minutes of last week's meeting, we talked about, it mentioned a lease, and the executive session notes the city lease, but now it mentions a license. What's, can somebody give me an example of the difference there on what we're talking about?
There are, well, first of all, I invited you to attend that executive session, so you could have been there.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's two different instruments and two different ways for them to utilize that space, that the council wanted to allow them to do that.
It's two different, I'm just asking, I really don't know. And I do appreciate the invitation, at that point, that late in the day, I was unable to make those accommodations, but I do appreciate you asking that, yeah. So, I've done a little bit of my own research, and if you've done, if you ever used AI, ChatGPT, by all means, endorse it, because it's very handy. But, in order to declare this land able to lease city land, we have to first declare it a surplus. And one of the things that, when we think about the surplus, and as it comes to real estate, it means it's no longer needed for public use. As part of your consideration whether, to whether the city property is being used by the public, consider the thousands that walk, bike, or drive down this path, you see there's real, no real reason for navigability, except for a few people that live on the street, but yeah, it's constantly being put to use. The proof is not that, this is proof that this is not a surplus property. Numerous residents paused to photograph sunsets in the precise location where the boat lift is being proposed. It's very highly utilized with its intended purpose, and I suggested about a street's name, Lakeview. Doing my research, and maybe it can be clarified that, if, according to the Mississippi Code for Municipalities, that surplus land is considered for lease as to be published in a public newspaper, which I thought was still ironic in today's age, for three weeks, and then put to bid and awarded to the highest bidder. Doesn't sound like we're going that route here, but if, I have to believe private dedicated access to the water, especially where the city is still responsible for rain, for the bulkhead maintenance, which is a huge cost of someone owning property on the harbor, has to most likely worth anywhere from five to six figures on the market. You can look at the value of the homes on the inner harbor compared to the ones that aren't ours, and you'd probably see that parallel. Do we have any agreed terms to the lease, any timing, cost, or anything at this point?
No.
No, not yet, okay. Because Mr. Brady does not have repairing rights on his deed, as Mr. Fandran confirmed, it would appear to me that he has no more legal right to a lease here than someone living on Orchard or Martin Street. We then naturally circle back to the point of the land being put up for bid, as called for in the Mississippi Code for Municipalities. This starts to open a lot, get into a lot of murky waters, I don't know how I would manage it moving forward, but it seems to, I think it would kind of open a bunch of doors that we might not want to open at this point. After all of this, and I think, Michael, you just mentioned that, after all of this, if the lease were to move forward, but the DMR were to deny the project, we would then cancel the lease, is that my understanding? I guess we'd have to come back for a discussion.
The, well, as I explained to council, so your, what's been presented tonight, the version that's not on the agenda would be for preliminary approval, that would not include approval of a lease or license, or any form of agreement at this point, and then come back to council for final approval after DMR reviews the project.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. I want to address the design real quick, and we're about to start getting the slide deck, so bear with me. Using every tool available to me as an engineer, I have yet to be able to replicate this drawing to scale. The first slide that you see seems to be about twenty-five percent underrepresented on the detail on page one. And I know it's not stamped by a licensed surveyor, so I can understand that, but when you see, looking at the diagram here, which surprisingly, Google Earth is very, Google Earth measuring tools are very accurate, and when I made this little reference line right here, forty feet, and I put it down by Mr. Brady's design, he seems to be about two and a half times off the width of that pier reference right there, which is four feet, so you take two and a half times of four feet, it's about ten foot short, underrepresenting the total impact according to his own measurements, which is ten feet over forty feet, it's about a twenty-five percent hit on the misrepresentation. This is the second time we've received, or I've gotten a copy of drawings that were underrepresented to the overall impact of the area, and as it sits now, I, it will encroach further into the harbor significantly than it appears here, and also much closer to Dr. Gutierrez's property to the north. I would encourage that I, some type of documented, surveyed drawing be done before moving forward to, so we truly understand the overall impact and location of the design here. And one more thing to note for the city council is, the DMR's permitting application requires that you extend no more than twenty-five percent into the waterway to avoid intrusion of other boats, as shown in the excerpt on page two, that's straight from the DMR application for which this structure would fall into, this MSGP zero two. So, as Mr. Sheldon said before, we're over fifty percent at this point. Then on page three, as I just mentioned, you can see that it, very similar to Mr. Sheldon's drawing, it goes over the fifty percent here, and if it moves, if it has to move further south, then you're looking in the sixties and seventies percent, therefore essentially cutting off the rest of that, because you have shallow water access, or you have shallow, much shallower water along the Lane's property right there, so we're essentially cutting off any access further south there through the waterway. The development of the proposed structure will not only impact our beautiful view, but it will impact the desirability of our homes, and therefore our property values. You see, and beauty there is value. The city also recognizes this by spending hundreds of thousands of dollars every year for landscaping, public space, upkeep, park beautification. Similarly, if you were cease funding for these efforts, I'm sure you'd start hearing some complaints, and tourism would probably drop a little bit, and then we'd see revenue drop, property values drop. Same thing here, this is no different. The current plans show a massive footprint, and will surely have a significant vertical aspect to it too, for which we've been providing no documentation. It's likely to, as Mr. Fandran confirmed, have a boat lift, and with boat lifts come dock boxes and fish cleaning stations and all they like. We're essentially putting up a billboard-sized obstruction in this location that will rob every one of the beauty we currently hold while giving Mr. Brady what only he wants. Pages four and five of your handout show, and you have the numbers bottom right of the slides, show the before and after of the view from our property. So, page slide four, like Mr. Sheldon said, this is one of the, one of the reasons we bought this house. I personally liked living in the country, but this was our negotiation with, in our household, I was able to get some, a great view of the water, and we're closer to family. Now, if you flip over to page five, you see what is likely to occur, and this is probably not even of the elevation that's required. It's quite the difference, quite the difference. If allowed to move forward, we will all see our property values drop just as they would, just as the city would if we neglected the beautification efforts around the city. In fact, well, actually, let me correct that, everybody else's property values would drop while Mr. Brady's would not. Pages four and five, I'm sorry, if allowed to move forward, we will all see our property values drop just as the city would experience if we neglected the beautification efforts. In fact, I was able to find a past real estate listing, and the description of my home included, "Watch the boats pass from the front porch." If this was, if this does move forward, I'll be only watching one boat from now on. One thing that struck me as odd is there's been no drawing provided, as I mentioned before, the vertical aspects. The vertical piece of the structure is by far the most disruptive piece of the design, or of the project, excuse me. Furthermore, according to DMR design criteria, access to the deck will be, have to be elevated some four feet above the grass line, that puts it approximately at the same elevation of the road adjacent to it, so you can see how this thing can climb very quickly. My next one, point out the impacts of the structure to the neighborhood. We have people here tonight and watching online who are also very affected by this. Page six shows how this structure impacts a hundred percent of his neighbors directly to the south. You can see the views from different porches, swings, so forth, and we've managed to put one structure in the middle of all of them. In fact, you'd probably be hard-pressed to find a more obstructive location in the entire harbor, now that I think about it. Since I talked with you last, I've chatted with several residents about the project, and they all share stories with me to date back, in some cases decades, of using this location to feed ducks with their kids, catch fish, watch the sunset, as project changes all that. Oh, by the way, y'all have quite the viewing audience, I had many people come up to me after last week's, or last time's comments, and really was curious to what was going on in the harbor, and also shared with me many concerns and stories as well. To conclude, I want to emphasize the profound impact of the, that the proposed structure would have, not only on our neighbors who cherish the view and the shared spaces, but on the entire community that has treasured this area for generations. This land is not surplus, it's being used exactly how it was always intended. Furthermore, I encourage you to avoid trading into the murky waters surrounding leasing and licensing on Lakeview, not to mention any subsequent bidding process that may have to unfold after the fact. At its heart, our argument is about preserving the integrity of this shared space, honoring the memories and experiences of families who have called it home for decades, and ensuring that any development aligns with both the letter and spirit of our community standards. As Mr. Sheldon mentioned earlier, our own ordinances are to promote the city's policy of preserving and protecting the character of our residential areas. I urge you to do just that. Let's preserve and protect the character of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Is there anyone else that's here to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am?
Very briefly, and I didn't know about this till yesterday. My name is Lisa Hollister, I've lived in Pascagoula for sixty-seven years, and love Pascagoula. Now, I predated Michael back there. I grew up, I guess you'd say on the wrong side of the tracks. I lived in a little neighborhood, I'm not even gonna say where, because I just denigrated it, and I'm sorry, but I didn't have water access, and my daddy would put us in the car and take us down to the exact spot that Mr. Sheldon was showing you, and we would get out of the car with our little picnic lunch, and our blanket, and our fishing pole, and our bread to feed the ducks, and I cannot tell you how many times in my life I did that, and what it meant, it's one of my favorite memories. Now, when I grew up and I was a young adult, I bought a house on Shepherd Avenue, and I had three young boys, and we rode their bicycles, and I pulled them in wagons with fishing poles and bread, and we fed the ducks and we fished, and they would tell you if they were in this room, they're all grown up. It was one of the most wonderful memories they had. Now, what I remember about the area is, there was a little pier. I don't know who owned it, again, I was born in nineteen fifty-eight, this is my whole life. There was a little pier, but it was a little pier, and as Mr. Sheldon said, it was little boats pulled up to it, and I even had a little rubber boat, or plastic, whatever you call it, inflatable boat, that I would put over the side and put my children in, and we would paddle around, and I didn't know who owned it, I just knew I was allowed to use it, and so was everybody else. The Torjessens, I believe, allowed everybody to use it. It was, it's just always been a public access. Now, I'm fortunate now, I live on the harbor, inside the harbor, so I have private water, and I'm blessed, but it does concern me, but that this particular piece of property, which has always been available to every citizen in Pascagoula, and the gentleman said earlier, it was twenty-one thousand, approximately, so you're going to take what has historically been available to twenty-one thousand people and give it to one family for their exclusive use for a dollar? And I question that, and again, I don't have a dog in the fight, but I want everybody in Pascagoula to be able to enjoy, enjoy that beautiful little spot that has always been for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right.
So, the council, yeah, before you do that, two different resolutions, one would approve the license agreement, that's one on the agenda, the other one is the one I've been discussing, that you should have a copy of, which would grant a preliminary approval, and then after DMR completes its review, would come back to y'all for a final approval. That's what I'm gonna get.
Can I, can I, I just have something I want to-
You can come up, yeah, yeah.
It's not a lie. Before I write what, I mean, say what I wrote, I would like for you all to know, we are very willing to compromise, we've been willing from the start. We understand DMR has protocols, and that the twenty-five percent rule, that was new to me last week, that was brought to my attention. We are very willing to make that work. Our initial dock drawing was parallel to the street, and then after our conversation with Mr. Sheldon, Bentley did turn it parallel, and we removed the house that we were requesting. So I do, I just want y'all to understand, we are willing to work and be accommodating, and we know DMR has a set standard for how they do things, we're very aware of that. So I just wanted to say that before I just wrote a little something. My name is Carly Torjesson Brady, my husband Bentley and I are the third-generation homeowners of eight oh six Lakeview Drive here in Pascagoula. It is our proposed dock that's in discussion this evening. First, we would like to thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to meet with you all a couple of weeks ago, to discuss more in depth the plans that we had concerning our proposed project. We were happy to hear your questions and concerns, and we thank you for the chance we were given to have an open conversation. Second, we would like to thank the city manager, city planner, city attorney, mayor, and all of the city council for the time and the consideration that you have taken on this matter. We know that your jobs are not easy, and we appreciate the diligence and care you have taken while considering our proposed project, including reflection of other constituents' concerns. We appreciate being a part of a community where every voice is heard and considered. Lastly, we would like to thank you all for the work that you do for the great city of Pascagoula. Thank you for making it not only a place that we are proud to say we were raised in, but making it a place that we're happy to have our roots planted in. Have a great evening, thank you.
All right, thank you.
No, I think those are the two potential paths for tonight, if y'all want to move forward with it. Ready for y'all's consideration.
So, do we have a motion? Obviously, Michael has shared there, there are many options out there, he's presented the license option, or granting the preliminary approval, the resolution that I think was provided late this afternoon.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
To the young lady.
Yes, sir.
Now, am I understanding that y'all, maybe talking about tilting it more a little bit to the south?
Yes, we, we-
I mean, to the north, I'm sorry.
We, we shifted closer initially to the north side of the property line, due to the fact that we were concerned regarding everybody being able to get down in the inlet, as we call it. Our understanding with DMR is that you can do that, you just have to have that adjacent property line, if you're going in the ten feet, sign off on that. We are not a hundred percent sure exactly how DMR is going to approach the size, the state, everything like that. We are more than willing to make, like I said, make accommodations if we need to turn it, if we need to go side, we are more than willing to do that, and as we've been willing to do that from the start, that was the initial drawing that was submitted, was with the actual slip facing side, side to side.
Parallel.
Parallel in the way.
Yeah, parallel in the way.
So, let me understand, why did that change?
We had a neighbor that did not like the drawing, and they all felt that it's too big and too- big and too large.
The neighbor that did not like that drawing is myself. That was the very first time that that became a part of me. I would assume you gave that drawing to the city so they had someone on file. Excuse me. I would urge you to go back and look at that drawing. Yes, it was, your dock was parallel to the street, but it was even further out. It was 55 foot out on the south side, the length of it. They had available docks on the west side of the boat lift, on the east side of the boat lift, these are in-water docks, and on the south side. It was huge. Yeah, it's very low, but it would even obstruct a few more of what they, what I've shown you tonight.
All right. Thank you. So, do I have a motion? What are y'all thinking?
I'd like to have a motion to preliminarily grant approval pending Brady's getting with the DMR and working that out with them, and then coming back to the city council for final approval.
But I would like to say something. I don't live on the waterfront, but I can understand both sides, so I would like for these two people, well, these neighbors, just to get together and see what would be fair, because I think you should be able to have a pier if you live on the water. But I can also understand, you know, obstructing your vision and the view, so I just think that they should be able to come to an agreement. You know, I just think they should be able to have a pier, but you know, it should be okay with everybody. And I'll second that, ma'am.
All right, so I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion, questions?
I would, if we could, put something in this preliminary approval to state something about that it won't obstruct the waterway more than 25%, and kind of state the, what the, what the rules are, that it won't extend out, because if, if, if the math on what Mr. Sheldon and Mr. Jones have turned in is correct, I haven't done the measuring on Google Earth or anything myself, but if that is correct, then it is over halfway across, which is, my concern is that affects the navig- navigability? Is that a, was that a word?
It's close enough.
Anyway, and that also, like I've said before, about the dredging and things like that, that we are ultimately responsible for. So I too think that if, I have a concern that it could turn into a boat slip rental situation. That may not be their primary use at this time, but it would, it could happen in the future. So I think that it, the preliminary approval, if we can put some, a little more restrictions in there, maybe it's just that it has to come back to us. I'm okay with that, as long as we get a break.
I have a quick request, please. I'm Dr. Gutierrez, and I live next door to the Brady's on the north side. If you could add to that, I think it's a good idea, if you could add that they need to build their structure 10 feet away from my property line.
I think, isn't that the rules? Is that the rules already, the 10-foot? Y'all referred to the 10-foot.
You have to have special permission from the neighbor to be able to be within that 10-foot box.
Okay.
Ms. Gutierrez, Dr. Kears, by sense, do you have a pier at your property?
Yes.
Well, we have a motion, second. I think they know the concerns, and we can talk about it with them, and so before it comes back for a final approval, I think we have a chance to make sure that we handle this. Because I think DMR is gonna force, I mean, I think that's their rule, the 20-foot.
They're very strict. I've worked with them on several projects.
And I think they'll require actual engineering drawings instead of different types of sketches. I think that that's a big concern I have. It's like, one person has a sketch, the other person has a sketch. I'd really like to see what it would actually look like.
All right, we have a motion and a second, as Michael mentioned, on the floor. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? Motion passes. And Mike Darcy reiterated, we thank you all for coming and sharing your opinion. That's why we have these meetings, and want to make sure that we're understanding all aspects, and we'll, you'll come back to us after that due diligence is done, has been done, and we'll talk further. All right. Moving on to the next agenda item.
Our next item, item 9B, is a resolution approving the FY26 group health plan reinsurance and admin fees. Melanie Kaver from 90-degree benefits is here to address counsel. Melanie, thank you for your patience tonight.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I said your last name wrong.
It's Wagner.
Wagner, Kaver, we used to work here. Sorry, I got that wrong. It's been a long day.
I wondered, I was like, I didn't know there were two...
Melanie Wagner, sorry. Sorry for giving your name wrong, and thank you for your patience.
I mean, we've only known each other for how many years?
I'm sorry, I know your name.
It's fine, it's fine. I'm just here on behalf of 90-degree benefits. We handle your employee benefit plans. Normally, John Lockard is here, but he's out of town, so I'm sorry, I'm not as handsome as John, but you know, I'm here. So, I'm the director of operations and marketing at 90-degree benefits, so, like I said, we handle all of your employee benefits. So just to keep it very brief, to explain basically the difference as to why you're self-funded as opposed to fully insured, those are your two options. Fully insured is just basically if you were covered with, like, a United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield. So the main difference is with the fully insured plans, they are cookie cutter plans. So they have specific designs, specific plans that you can choose from, but you can't deviate from those plans. Also, you can't control your cost. So your claims are gonna be what your claims are gonna be, but under a fully insured plan, if you have claims that are, you know, negatively affecting the plan, they can increase your rates for, you know, up to 50-plus percent each year, because they want to, you know, they want to recoup their money that they've spent. Under the self-funded plans, which is what you currently have, you control your cost and you have a flexible benefit plan design. So it's up to you to choose what your benefits are for you and your employees. And then also, you set aside claims reserves, funding, to pay your claims, and you can control those costs based on your plan design. So that's the main two differences. And the good news this year is there's no rate increase for your reinsurance premiums, and there's no increase in your admin fees. So those are staying the same. So I know that was very brief, but, you know...
The only increase we saw this year in our premiums was for our dental insurance, was a 4% increase, which for employee only is only 65 cents a pay period. For employee family, it's $2.15 a pay period. So minimal increase. We have years where we have no increases across the board. Sometime, last year, vision went up, maybe term life, this year it's dental, so, but our medical plan, no, no deduction increases or premium increases for our employees.
That's really good. I appreciate it.
And just, just in case, you know, you can't sleep at night, I brought a few brochures that explain self-funding a little bit more. So I'll, I'll leave those with Justin.
Okay, thank you.
I think that it's important to, I'm, I've served on the insurance committee for both the city and the county for, I don't, I don't even know how many years, but it was a lot. And one of the things that I think is important for the employees even, and the public, to understand is that it's, 90-degree benefits is the administrator of the plan. We decide as a city council the things that are gonna be covered in the plan. Basically, we designed the plan, that was what was approved tonight. And so I know through the years, I've heard, oh, well, you know, we don't like this, I did, this part of it, or this part of it, or they won't pay it, and it's not them. It's, it's really us, that we, we decide as a city of what our plan is going to look like. And so I think that's important for the employees to understand.
Thank you for clarifying that. I mean, we're certainly not gonna, you know, throw you under the bus and say, well, it's not us, it's, you know, the city. But that, that's true. A lot of people do mistake us for the insurance company, and we are not an insurance company. We're just your administrator. So we pay on behalf of, of what you basically decide for us to pay. That's how we administer the plan and compliance with all the regulations and the laws.
They protect us from HIPAA and stuff.
And I was HR director before taking this role, and I've worked with Melanie Wagner, know your name, and John for the entire time that I, I, that's the first thing I did when I started here, was working with the insurance company. They are great to work with, they're always open to any suggestions we have, and like John always says when he comes in here, like you said, Darcy, it, this is up to us. If you want to change it, change it. This is, this is our call on this. They just administer it for us, so...
And we're always available to anyone, so, you know, if y'all ever have any questions or you want a further explanation of anything, you know, feel free to call us, we're literally right down the street. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and explaining the differences. Much appreciated. All right, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution approving group health insurance, or the health plan reinsurance and administrative fees for the upcoming 2026 year?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. All right, next, we move on to the bid for the crosswalk.
All right, item 9C is a resolution approving bids for the Jackson Avenue Crosswalk Replacement Project. The city will be removing and replacing multiple pedestrian crosswalks on Jackson Avenue, and also restriping the street. We received five bids. The best and lowest bidder was Coastal Development, the amount of $155,796.25, and this is within budget for the project.
Is this just the brick?
Yeah, taking out those brick pavers and replacing it with a stamped concrete.
All right. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution approving the bid for the Jackson Avenue Crosswalk Replacement Project?
Sumo.
Okay, I think I heard first and a second at the same time, so, any questions or further discussion?
I have one thing. Did we ever check to see if the accessible route to the post office where people park, if that could be striped? So it remains an accessible route instead of a parking space?
James and I are gonna look at this tomorrow. It's been on my list from our first meeting, I think, and so we'll, we'll take a look at it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, next, back to Justin again.
I got a couple more, y'all, sorry. Now, item 9D is a resolution approving a professional service agreement for legal services with Taggart Rhymes, PLLC. Taggart Rhymes has represented the city as the city prosecutor since 2021. They're requesting an increase of their, of their annual fee to $40,000, as this is more in line with the services they're providing and with what the other municipalities around us are paying. For example, Moss Point pays $36,000 annually for services from Taggart Rhymes, and we, they handle a lot larger caseload here with the city. And so Cherie Wade is here tonight. If anybody has any questions that you would like to have her address, she's here tonight from Taggart Rhymes.
All right.
They're asking for...
$40,000 increase, yeah, an increase.
Can you give us just like a two-second, I mean, like a one-minute overview about how many cases you're gonna, I mean, how many cases you handle? I know you're there at court every Wednesday as the city's prosecutor, handling all of our court docket and, and that kind of thing. Can you give us any idea about how many cases that is?
I can't give you, actually, when Justin let me know that this was gonna be a separate line item this evening, I called Jennifer Warden and asked her, because she can run the dockets. I don't have access to the dockets unless it's my paper copy every week. And I asked her, can you run the numbers for me? And she said, sure, I can, but we have court tomorrow. I said, okay, I won't ask you to do that. But she did, I did look at the, the numbers that we do have for tomorrow. And so we have our regular docket, that's people who appear for a plea, not guilty or guilty. That combined with our trial docket and our felony docket are 364 cases tomorrow. Now, there will be some no-shows, some, you know, we'll ask our judge to take warrants for those individuals. But on our trial docket, we have 24 cases set tomorrow, and so that's 24 cases that we've got to prepare for and review. We have three felony preliminary hearings tomorrow. We also have our jail docket, I don't recall how many we have for those. But we do have a voluminous docket. She did mention, and I have noticed an increase, and I know the chief is in there too, we've noticed a significant increase in our preliminary hearings. Those, if you're not familiar with what those are, those are for individuals who are charged with felony offenses. All felony crimes come through the municipal court first. The judge hears if there's enough evidence to bound the case over to, bind the case over to the grand jury. And Ms. Darcy, I think I recognize you. You sat as a foreperson for one of our grand juries when I was at the DA's office.
Yep.
So I recognized you, and so it's good to see you again.
You too.
And so we do handle a lot of cases. Unfortunately, you know, crime keeps me in business, and so, but we are working hard to resolve those cases. Our officers are wonderful to work with, our court staff is just unparalleled to others. So we really do have a well-oiled machine working. I don't, I don't know if that answered your question, but it's the best that I've ever tried.
Yes, it does. One of the things that I think is important for our public to understand, because they're gonna watch online, they're gonna look at the minutes and that kind of thing, is they'll just go, what do you mean, they, you know, they went from 18,000 to 40,000, but they don't understand the caseload and understand what those numbers mean? That that's a lot of hours every week, as to how many hours you spend preparing and then following through on all of those, and like you said in a, in a note that I saw, that all the discovery that you have to be subject to and stuff.
Right, I just told you about court, actual time in court on Wednesdays, and that doesn't count my, my preparation to read the discovery, talk with our officers. I spent an hour on Friday talking with our lead detective on the Engle shooting, so that way I could be prepared for that preliminary hearing. So there's not a day that goes by that I don't get a call from one of our officers who will ask just run-of-the-mill questions, and that's what we're here for. We're here to support them, make sure that our charges are correct, make sure our documents are right, make sure our warrants stick, so that way we are providing people with the appropriate due process, and we can see these cases through.
I retired from there, and I talk, still talk to a lot of the police officers, and they've had nothing but great things to say about y'all.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that.
Speaks volume.
Thank you. I love this job.
I just wanted people to understand how much work goes into it.
Well, thank you.
When they see the dollar amount, that we're getting our, our value.
And, and we know, look, we go into public service, it's not for the dollars. We, it's public service for a reason, but there is a lot of work that goes into it as well, and so we appreciate the council's consideration of the increase.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Did you have something?
I think y'all covered it. I was just gonna tell you how great they are actually for our officers, how much education we get from them, positive and negative feedback on how to improve, 24/7 they're available, and they are next to none for our prosecution, so we're dedicated, very, very personal.
Awesome.
Our community has that quite a good.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the professional service agreement for legal services for Taggart Rhymes, PLLC?
Sumo.
Second.
Thank you.
Second, third, and fourth.
All right, yeah, I think we've got everybody, so, hold that, so, any further discussion? I don't think we do. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Felix?
I love the motion.
All right. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, I think we have one more before the claim stops.
One more item. Item 9E is a resolution approving an employment agreement with Scott Corlou. Scott is our current public defender. He is a city employee, unlike our public, I mean, our city prosecutor, which is contracted with a firm. But he also provides legal services outside the scope of the public defender role. Because he's not able to be paid as a vendor, we set up this employment agreement that spells out all of his compensation, which includes his public defender salary plus an hourly rate for work outside of the public defender role. And, and so, yeah, for things he does for the city, such as eminent domain is one of some of the things, so...
Yeah, I was, I mean, recently.
Yeah, so he, he did not request an increase in his salary, and so this is just to approve the new employment agreement.
It, it increases the hourly rate, but that's subject to special approval from y'all to engage them to go do those types of projects.
And I think we looked into it with the county, I did look into what, how often that was used last year. We did have some eminent domain cases. It didn't amount to much of anything, and so it was a couple thousand dollars, I think, that would be the difference there, so...
Okay. All right.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. You will have a second?
Sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion?[1757.33] Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we move on to the claims docket.
You're good with this one?
Yes. All right, do, I have a motion to approve the docket of claims.
Summit.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to get through this real quickly, aren't we?
Darcy's going to handle this next one.
I'm going to have Darcy handle this.
Next is the docket of claims B. And are there any questions regarding the docket of claims B? There being none, do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims B?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying yes or aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And we'll call Amy back in.
All right, y'all, we're getting there. Okay, so we are now to the mayor and council items, right? Okay, perfect. Councilman Stallworth, anything you'd like to share?
Only thing I have to share is the same thing I say every meeting until I get it done. What is going on with code enforcement about that grass at the end of the North Market Street?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in process. That's all I know, that's in the process now. So the process is not quick, but it's in process on that one. And I believe they've spoken to the owner of that property as well, so.
Has he received a letter?
Yeah, the letter's been sent, but we, the, yes, I think that the issue, it's not an issue, but they're working out what needs to be done on the property now. So I hope you'll see something on that soon.
Yeah, because I have people that's worried me about that corner.
I know.
And if y'all drive through there, you can't see around that corner. And you know, Ingalls traffic gets real hectic, Chris, coming down at the end of North Market. You're trying to get out or go this way. It's pretty rough down there if you can't see.
That's a bad intersection anyway, without the grass.
It's not going south on that way inside on the east side.
Down by the, uh, Papco?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Right across the street on.
On that right turn.
Right, that right turn.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Gosh, how many grass cutting?
From where we started this thing, there's almost 600, man, to go back and look at them. But I think there's, I don't know how many was on this last one that they just turned over.
Just, I think six.
So there's 20 more in line to go till the next time. I mean, it's just steady flow, and some of them are repiques, trying to go back and sew again. Pick the worst ones to get.
Right.
So there's a lot that he's talking about. Do we know who the owners are?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Chris?
Some of that is city right-of-way that we probably need to.
The city right-of-way is not really the issue. It's not, and it's not just the grass cutting, it's a, I mean, tree. Yeah, it's a big.
It's a jungle, that's what it's described, yeah. Just the whole idea that people live right on side of it, and the grass, the trees and the grass are just as tall as the latest fence. You know, would y'all want to live around something like that?
No, and we're going to get it.
To my knowledge, when they approached me about it, it was on the last council who tried to get this guy to cut this grass. It should have been done then.
It might have been done then.
But I need it done now because it should have been done then.
Yeah, understood. I got you.
I understand what you're saying, but there's a process for everything. I agree with you 100%, it needs to be cut down because it is a dangerous intersection, like I said before. But unfortunately, what I've learned since I've come a councilman when I first came here is nothing happens overnight, unfortunately.
And due to the safe, the potential safety issues, does that change anything?
No, really. We have to give them so much time to send a letter, to go through the process.
So have they done been sent, have they done been sent a letter?
Yep.
Well, I wouldn't send a letter when me and, forget his name back there.
James?
I was in jail for a crime that I did not commit in my barbershop, and they didn't send me a letter. When I come to court, I found out they sent it to the wrong place. They put me in jail for something that I had no idea about. And the police officer came in my shop, he said, Mr. Carlos Stallworth? I said, yes. He said, you're under arrest. I said, on what charge? I haven't been in jail since I was 18 years old. I'm in my almost 60s now, and you're going to arrest me for something that I have no idea about? So when we get down to town, they said it was my property. I said, I just built a house. Then the police officer found out it was my barbershop. He said, I just left the barbershop, there's nothing wrong with the barbershop. But it had a few pickets that was kicked down by some rampant young man that jumped out of a vehicle one day and just, for some reason, he just kicked that dog on the fence and ran down the street. Couldn't catch him. Tried to, couldn't catch him. But that's what happened. But I went to jail for something I didn't know anything about. I just want to make sure that he served his paperwork the right way. Because I've been served mine before I was a council. I was served wrong.
Justin, can we get an update on this?
Sure will.
And make sure Carlos has that this week?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, Councilman Fournette?
All right, I'm a big big sir.
Okay, all right, perfect. Councilman Young. That's a woman, Young, excuse me. That's okay.
Quick question. Michael, have you heard anything back from the folks at Bullseye about our meeting? And then also, do we know when we're going to be meeting again with Slaughter and Associates?
Talk about the second question in executive session. As to the first one, they're supposed to be sending us a date. And they're going to come down here in person.
Yeah, okay.
We'll follow up and get a date.
All right, anything else? Councilman Young? Councilman McYoung? We'll get this. We'll move on to Councilman Barker.
Looking forward to the Buffett Bumpers Block Party coming up. I'm hearing a whole lot of people are going to be here. I've got a lot of car friends and just hoping they'll be prepared for it. I think it's going to be big, I think it's going to be real big. So just kind of wanted to fill y'all out, is there anything special we're doing? Obviously, we are, but I think it's going to be bigger than we're expecting.
Yeah, it's a Main Street event. They are, they're in stages of planning it. I get the Police Department newsletter every month, too, and that was in the newsletter today that they sent out to make sure that they have.
There's very few nighttime cruises in the coast sanctioned events. I think that's going to, some of the folks over here. So I don't know if we're shutting down parts of Pasco Street.
Shut down. Go ahead. Not sure if we have a newsletter yet, we've been doing one. Well, to answer your question on our side, we're working with Main Street. They have the designated area downtown that's going to be closed down. And a lot of that's going to be parked for the cruisers, but we're also planning for not being able to hold that many either with it being a sanctioned event from Cruising the Coast. And you're talking about 10,000 resident vehicles. A lot after we fill up will probably come through and have to pass them through. But we are planning to handle as many as possible. And not only that, we're reaching out to other police departments to send help with personnel. So we're volunteering to help with that as well. We're planning to handle the best we can.
We're going to park them everywhere we can.
It's probably similar to what Ocean Springs has to end up doing with their downtown. All right, perfect. Councilman Blake?
Proud to be American, that's it.
All right, perfect. And I'll round it out and just wanted to thank the staff. And I know Lindsay's not here, but want to give her a shout out for the Hurricane Katrina event that the city sponsored Friday of last week with the 20th anniversary. It was a very nice program. The Honorable Haley Barber, our former governor, was here and shared kind of his accounts of the storm, which was really insightful to kind of hear again and be reminded. I'm sure you guys felt the same way. But wanted to especially thank Lindsay and staff on the fabulous video that was shown. I know we've shared that via social media. If you haven't seen it, I highly encourage, take the seven minutes or whatever it is.
17.
The longer version is 17, but there's a shorter version. Yeah, it goes super quick, and I think you will hopefully feel a lot of pride for Pascagoula after viewing it. I think we're all saying proudly Pascagoula. So please give her some kudos if you see her for all the planning that she did for that event. And I believe we'll be moving on to executive session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session and determine if there's a need for executive session?
Second.
Got to take a vote. Oh, sorry. Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're moving into executive session. Thank you for coming this evening.